Okay, I believe we are ready to get started. I am going to call this meeting to order. City Clerk, can we have roll call? Chairwoman Horstman?
Present.
Vice Chairman Vasquez?
Present.
Supervisor Ryan?
I'm here.
Supervisor Begay?
Here.
Mayor Daggett?
There you go. I'm here.
Thank you.
I am joined by Zoom. Thank you.
I'm here too. Terrific. Vice Mayor Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet? Councilmember Harris, would you third up the land acknowledgement? Would you read it? But we're going to start in the regular order that we normally do. So Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. Please stand as you're able. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me, and I have not memorized it.
No worries. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right. First up is a call for public participation, and this call for public participation is for any comments not related to items on the agenda. Do we have any? Mayor, I do not have any request cards. Thank you very much. So then we're down to item number five, the presentation of the High Country Training
Good evening, Mayor Daggett, Chair Horstman, Supervisors, and Councilmembers. My name is Dan Musselman. I have the honor of serving as your Police Chief, and I'm here today to talk about the High Country Training Academy. With me from the Sheriff's Department is Lieutenant James Stang, and with me from the Coconino Community College is their new President, Eric Heiser, and he'll share a few words after I'm done up here. So our training academy came apart, came together on behalf of the previous CC President, Colleen Smith, as well as current President and staff members. The Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, and Northern Arizona University all partnered together because we recognized the increasing difficulty in getting academy seats for our new hires. Academy costs were increasing along with housing options. When we send our recruits out of town, not only do we have to pay the tuition to get them through the police academy, but we also have to pay for housing. And if we sent more than three or four recruits, they were requiring us to send a fully certified officer with them to be a class counselor. So in early 2022, we began working with ASPOST and the Community College and developed the curriculum for our new High Country Training Academy. After months of planning, staff developed an 832-hour curriculum of instruction lasting 21 weeks. Lessons, plans, curriculum, and the facilities had to pass audit by the Arizona State Arizona Peace Officers Standards and Training Board. We completed our audit, and our first training academy class started on October 3, 2022, and graduation of our nine recruits took place on February 24, 2023, right here in these chambers. The majority of the classes are held at the CCC campus on Lone Tree. Driver training, however, takes place down in Prescott, and our firearms instruction takes place out at the game and fish range east of the city. We developed our curriculum tailored to our needs and department standards. Recruits are now able to live in Flagstaff and be with their families. Financial, the city and the county, as well as NAU, receive a financial benefit of not having to pay housing to send people out of town. The state only required 663 hours of training, but ours is at 832 because we added additional classes we felt were beneficial to our community. These include advanced DUI detection, Native American cultural awareness, active shooter, building clearing, stop-the-bleed tactical medicine, search and rescue, and mental health first aid. Allowing recruits to live and train in their own home allows them to go home to their families for support. They can still help with dinner, childcare, and transportation is easier, and it allows the city and county to keep our money here local. Having the academy in Flagstaff also gives us significant oversight of our recruits. If one of them is struggling in a specific proficiency area, we can do remedial training on the weekends and not have to send people down to Phoenix or bring our recruits back. Addressing those deficiencies helps ensure success for our academy. The user group again consists of the Flagstaff Police Department, Coconino County Sheriff's Office, and a Northern Arizona University Police Department, and the Community College provides us the space and administrative assistant and provides for the salary of the class sergeant as well as the offices they work out of. And with that, I'll invite the CCC President, Mr. Eric Heiser, up to say a few words, and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett, Chair Horstman. Great to be here with all of you today. Yeah, so my name's Eric Heiser. I'm the new President at CCC. Been on the job just over two months now. Closed the college seven times because of snow. That's my claim to fame. Hopefully, we're done with that now. We'll see. But yeah, so a little bit about my experience. This is actually the third academy that I'll have oversight over from the Community College side. I started my career in rural Wyoming, right in the center of the state. We would lovingly refer to as being two weeks from anywhere, and had to do a satellite academy. The state of Wyoming would not allow a full-fledged academy to be anywhere other than in Douglas, Wyoming, which is near Casper, Wyoming, for those that are familiar, and a long drive for basically everybody else. But they did allow us to start a satellite academy, so we started that called the Rural Justice Training Center, moved to Salt Lake City as a Dean, and had oversight over the Salt Lake Community College Police Academy. This one, though, is the first one, and to the Chief and Sheriff's credit, that has focused specifically on educating their own officers. And like I said, my last two experiences were really with recruits from all over the state, and it was certainly, I guess you could say, canned training in the sense that it was not specific to the areas that the cadets and soon-to-be the officers were going to serve in. That brings a very unique advantage in that the officers that are training them can speak to them with very specifics as to what they're going to encounter in the communities that they serve. That's going to make them stronger as recruits. It'll make them stronger as officers. It'll make our communities a better place because the officers know what they're getting into. So CCC is a proud supporter. I'm not going to lie, there's been bumps in the road as we've kicked this thing off, but we're getting to a place where I think trying to feel out where the pain points are and get them taken care of, but we very much are looking forward to continued partnership and then very soon moving it into a college-level program so that all the recruits will get college credit should they choose to further their degree in criminal justice and move up the ranks of command staff as the need progresses. So happy to answer any questions that you might have of me. Otherwise, just very happy and grateful to be here and look forward to working with each of you in the coming weeks, months, and years ahead as we look to make Flagstaff a wonderful place, an even more wonderful place than it is.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? I have a question. If there's a recruit that is living in Phoenix or elsewhere, would they attend the academy in Phoenix, or would they have the option of coming up here?
Yes, Mayor Daggett, Councilmembers. They could come up here. Our academy will be opened up to other agencies, but there are local academies in Phoenix, so they'd most likely attend one of those closer to their home.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'll share this. First of all, thank you so much. I think this is really exciting, and I know some time ago, Dr. Smith also told us about this great idea, and I think it's wonderful that CCC has partnered with the Sheriff's Department, Flag PD, and also NAU. I think you're exactly right. First of all, we do have a shortage, and having this here hopefully will help us be able to recruit police officers and sheriff deputies to serve our community. And then being part of the community, being here for your training, I think really goes a long way to being able to serve Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff even better. So thank you so much. This is very exciting and really appreciate the update.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give thanks both to the Sheriff and the Chief, but also to our Community College President for making room for this very needed addition to our community, and I look forward to the expansions that may be in the future. And it's really exciting to see our Community College just addressing the needs of our local community, and I look forward to seeing future plans.
Supervisor Ryan, you are muted.
I tend to talk to myself a lot, so I feel at home. I want to, actually, I want to first extend my regrets for not being at the graduation, but I'm just so appreciative on what y'all had put together. Y'all know our struggles that we've had in recruitment, and to have this and to work together. And Mr. President, welcome on board. We look forward to meeting with you soon, but this collaboration is working so well. A good way to launch, and hopefully we can keep our positions filled as well. So really appreciate the getting out of the box and finding a solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great program for the community, no doubt about it. I'd just like to mention that Councilmember Matthews and Sweet and I attended the graduation, or what I call the pinning ceremony. It was standing room only, literally, the whole back area. It was, it's a very moving ceremony. I'm really glad I had a chance to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Thank you. I want to say thank you for all your efforts. The collaboration is great. We know that we have the recruiting shortage here in town, both in different agencies, and so this is going to go a long way in helping deal with that issue. So it's really exciting, and so thank you, CCC. Thank you, Flag PD. Thank you, Sheriff's Office and NAUPD for being involved. I did have a question. I was just kind of curious about how much are we saving per recruit by doing this program here in Flagstaff rather than having them to send to Phoenix or Prescott?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. Usually, for us, it's about 5,000 to 7,000 per recruit housing costs. It's probably more so than that when you factor in travel back and forth and fleet and all that, but at least 5,000 to 7,000.
Thank you. That's really important that the community understands that because, you know, when we're looking at our budget and we're looking where we're applying monies, I would much rather apply it to a program that's here in town than have to spend that money to send folks elsewhere. So great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just add my thanks to everything, but I have an idea. Are you all thinking maybe about doing some tours out there for maybe some of our high school students? It's kind of like grow your own, you know, get them interested in policing or whatever. Always think about kids when we're doing stuff like this, so. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Harris. I would say we're willing to give tours in any area. We, yeah, I think getting involved, especially earlier, we're finding even in high school, sometimes it's too late. Students have made up their minds and trying to get into the middle schools and show them that college is not an intimidating place and that they can be successful. But specific to law enforcement, yeah, I think it's, it does a couple of things. One, it educates so that they can see how these cadets are being trained and hopefully can show the students that, you know, it isn't just this big scary thing, that there's all this training that goes into being a law enforcement officer in Flagstaff or for Coconino County or for NAU. So yeah, tons of opportunities, and we'll absolutely welcome them to our space, and we'll likely be back here soon as we move forward with potential new building and asking for some sort of support. So that'll be the next big step for us here in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, I just think that it's really important when we think about policing and what that looks like around the country. Being able to grow our own force is just, you cannot beat that. We don't have to transport them in from somewhere else. They know the community. They know the people here. And Chief, you've had experience with growing your own, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Yes, Supervisor Begay?
I just say I want to say thank you to everyone that's been part of this effort, and I think it's very important because of the high risks that are happening out there. I think we all need to band together, and working together is something that, you know, will bring us to success. And I just want to also thank Eric Heiser for being here and being part of it, and welcome to Flagstaff and Mr. Musselman and your staff and the county and the City Council. I think it's, you know, just having meetings like this, you know, we could educate each others and, you know, really work on things that really needs to get done out there. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Begay.
Thank you so much. And now, in the spirit of sharing, I'm going to invite Chair Horstman to introduce the next topic.
Sure, it's the longest agenda item, I noticed, but anyway, no. This is time for the Regional Plan Update and Direction on Plan Creation and Adoption. Staff's going to provide an update on the project status and review the public participation and scenario planning process that are underway and are going to be continuing through the calendar. The Board and Council, of course, may be providing feedback. As we listen to this, the staff is seeking direction on two major points. Number one, how would the Board of Supervisors and City Council like to form a committee to oversee the selection of a scenario, creation of a future growth illustration, and plan translation to goals and policies? And number two, in what order would the Board and Council like to carry out the joint review and adoption of the Flagstaff Reasonable Plan 2045? So with that, it looks like we have experts that are going to guide us on this, so welcome.
Thank you, Chairwoman Horstman, Mayor Daggett, Councilmembers, and Supervisors. My name is Sarah Decter. I am the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff, and I have two co-presenters today. With me is Melissa Shaw, who is a Senior Planner at Coconino County and the Long Range Planner, and then also joining us today is Alex Steinberger from Cascadia Partners, who is our Scenario Planning Consultant. So we've broken this presentation into a few different sections. One, we're going to bring everyone up to speed on what we've been doing the last few months, and I feel it's been a little longer than that. I think we were visiting with you maybe in October last. And then we will have Mr. Steinberger give you a synopsis of how scenario planning works and what we will be doing with it this spring, and then we'll get to the critical questions that we're looking for Council and Board of Supervisor direction on, of how to proceed in the future phases, because we need a good amount of lead time to be successful at recruiting people for committees and setting up an endorsement and adoption process that can be effective. So thank you so much for giving us so much time today and paying attention to this considerable long-range planning effort. So I always like to remind, in case someone watching has never heard of the regional plan before, that Flagstaff and Coconino County are unique because other cities in Arizona do a general plan just for their city limits and any areas they plan to annex in the future. We have a very different approach because we look at everything within our metropolitan planning area, including Belmont, Doni Park, Kachina and Mount Air, Fort Valley, and all the surrounding areas of Coconino County, and we think of it as one community. To have a plan that does this, we actually adopt one plan twice. So we adopt a general plan for the city, which has to follow the state statute and be ratified by voters every 10 years, and then we adopt an amendment to the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan for this area, which is adopted as a major amendment by the Board of Supervisors. So we have the shared document that meets the shared responsibilities for land use, transportation, infrastructure, and services within our community, so we have a holistic approach. Fits the theme of all the excellent partnerships we're able to build together. The ingredients of this plan are many, and so the first year of the plan really is pulling a lot of these things together. We have strategic organizational plans. There's area plans in the county for Belmont, Doni Park, Fort Valley, and there are also specific plans for the south side, La Plaza Vieja, and other neighborhoods within the city. We have other policies like the City of Flagstaff's Carbon Neutrality Plan and master plans like the Broadband Master Plan for Coconino County. On top of that, we bring in new information, brand-new data analysis and forecasting, which the census numbers are a little behind, but we're trying to stay ahead and stay coordinated on that, and a fresh look at community values and visions, as well as coordinating across multiple government agencies. You'll see these themes throughout of how we're trying to pull all of this together as we head towards the moment where we actually start writing a plan. Because this process is complex and involves outreach to almost 100,000 people in our community, and this is the third time we have shared this regional planning effort, we've built some guiding principles based on our past successes and the things we wish we could do better. So one of our guiding principles is to have the right people and the right agenda with the right timing. And what that has meant is, in our approach this time, we have broken what used to be the idea of pulling together 300 people in a room post-pandemic. That is not a very easy thing to do anymore, and there's a lot of accustomed, people who are accustomed to hybrid opportunities, and so we're trying to find ways to make sure our agendas and what we're doing with the public and experts is always well-timed and includes the right people. We also set a principle that the experts in the community and the experts in the community, who are experts on their neighborhoods, on their neighbors, on what values they share, can work together. To do all this, there has been a need for outside facilitation, which we'll talk about that a little bit as we get into what we're up to this year, and also a guiding principle to ensure equity inclusion from start to finish in this process. And then last, what you will be discussing tonight as well is clear expectations for how to endorse the outputs of this effort. And so I will hand off a few slides to Melissa Shaw to discuss the Comprehensive Plan Update and how that interacts with this process.
Thank you, Sarah. And Councilmembers and Board of Supervisors, again, Melissa Shaw, Long Range Planner with the county. And we just wanted to touch on the county's Comprehensive Plan Update very briefly because we are getting started on this process. We're a bit following the regional plan, but we will be integrating some of the information that we're learning from this into our county's Comprehensive Plan. So as Sarah mentioned, the regional plan is an amendment to the county's Comprehensive Plan, but the Comprehensive Plan includes the entire county, so it's our bigger, long-range planning document. We have been giving yearly implementation reports to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, so we've done that this winter. We've held scoping workshops in January of this year to learn from users of our Comprehensive Plan what some of the bookends should be for updating this process and to also set expectations for our update. And we're actually going to, we've taken the scoping workshop results to the Planning Commission, and we'll be taking them to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. So we have some concurrent meetings going on this week. It's a busy week for planning projects. And then the real bulk of the process will begin later this year and then moving into adoption in 2025 with actually reaching out, doing our update process, and our community outreach as well. We are also looking at plan adoption in late 2025. So just a brief introduction to the county's Comprehensive Plan. And just a little bit more information, as I mentioned, tomorrow, the Board of Supervisors will review the scoping workshop results, our draft public participation plan, and our process moving forward. We'll need to get their agreement as far as our public participation plan, and then they'll be looking at that again on March 28 to actually approve the public participation plan, and throughout, we'll be coordinating with the City of Flagstaff on the regional planning efforts to look at what relevant data, mapping information, as well as the scenario planning results we could possibly incorporate into our Comprehensive Plan. So with that, that was just a brief update on that. I'll turn it back to Sarah.
So the next part of our presentation will go over the public participation work we've completed and what is on the road ahead of us, so that we all have a good foundation that so we get into scenario planning, we're comfortable with the process as a whole. So we started working on this public participation plan in 2021, and Council and the Board of Supervisors has been getting regular updates on it over time, and it was built as an outline because we knew as we worked through a process this complicated, we would be learning together and that we would try some things and be successful, and we would try some things and need to adjust. And so the outline is built on four phases. Phase one was really to engage people on getting curious and trying to understand the region. Through that process, we analyzed over 180 metrics of data and tried to create digestible products, so everyone had baseline information of how we would be moving forward. We also created art and excitement around the creative side of what planning and visioning can do before we moved into phase two, which really started this fall. Phase two is an iterative process. We're maybe like 25% through what we expected to accomplish in this phase, but it works in pieces. So as we get one piece done and we report out the results, which you'll find things on our website, like a report of the visioning workshops, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis that we did with all the boards and commissions, we really keep revisiting and keep taking those same topics through further iterations and refinement. And scenario planning is one of the tools we will use to do that. Tonight, after we go through where we have been and what's ahead in the next workshops with scenario planning, we'll talk about the next phases, which is really where we get down to the business described in the state statutes of adopting a plan, sending it out for public comments, getting information and legal reviews done so that whatever we have gotten out of these first two phases becomes a legal regional plan that meets all the needs of the community. So we're currently in the middle of phase two. So during phase one, we created 24 snapshot videos, and so far, we've created 14 reports that provide more in-depth discussion of those videos. I've actually heard that those are being used in planning processes even outside the city, that other organizations that are doing strategic planning or planning with relation to development are also looking at these snapshots and using them, and so they've become really useful beyond just our process. We went to many community events over the summer. We're doing youth outreach with Flagstaff High School and with the Northland Family Youth Shelter, and we've done a strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities analysis with 23 boards and commissions. This fall, we had 11 visioning workshops, and we specifically designed those to be geographically available and time-wise available to a lot of different people all throughout the community. So no one workshop was more than a handful of folks, maybe five in some cases and 30 in another, but the idea was to be spread out so really people could make a time that worked for them to participate. We also hired our Scenario Planning Consultant, Cascadia Partners, who has also brought on board on board subconsultants of Building Community and ETD, which are local firms, to help with our public outreach. Our first step was to form a technical advisory group, which are experts in the community on various topics we will be looking at in scenario planning. And we have recruited about 16 people who are in that group and who have started working with us on reviewing the material before it goes out for public participation or other efforts, so that we make sure we're getting kind of a peer review all along the way. It's not just staff creating material with a consultant, but we kind of have this peer review ward in the tag. And so, excited to this month, we will, at the end of the month, the week of March 27th, have four scenario planning workshops, in addition to some other efforts to work with the community in other settings. So, the visioning workshops, and you will find on the website, a complete report of all of what we heard at that meeting, included several exercises. We did community asset mapping, and so, we got a really good breadth of discussion of what are the most important assets in the community and how do we define them. We also did draft vision statements through some card-storming techniques. We identified 20 critical questions that we want to make sure the plan is answering. And those questions, when we released a draft plan, will also kind of include a little write-up that says, at the beginning of the process, here are the questions you wanted to know what the answers were, and here's how the plan is trying to answer those questions. So, we've already created a product that's going to be part of the 60-day public review in a year. And then, we've also had lots of places just to have quiet conversations with staff and with your neighbors and to draw and think and bring whatever creative thoughts needed to be brought to the forefront into the room so people had a chance to digest them. Now, we're in phase two. And as phase two showed, that iterative loop, there's actually three tracts within phase two. So, there's the technical review. There is the tag, and there are the government and staff partners, and additional reviews with boards and commissions, which will all be looking at what we're hearing and what we're producing from that technical point of view. There will be the normal things people expect to see out of a regional plan for the general public, workshops, online surveys, webinars, meeting with organizations. This month, we're meeting with the Northern Arizona Association of Realtors and the Downtown Business Alliance, for example, and those will be ongoing throughout this process. But we are also looking at who in the community is highly impacted by land use and transportation decisions and has shown up or felt unwelcome in this process in the last two rounds, and really are trying to create opportunities that are developed with those groups to understand how to make an effective outreach that's more than just staff-led engagement. So, one of the key things we are doing for this is having our consultant help us lead a community-based organization effort. We do not have all of these groups signed up yet, but the goal is to have eight or so groups in the community that are nonprofits that would help take on a leadership role, kind of as subconsultants, to bring key constituencies that they are working with every day to the process so we can have a more diverse and meaningful engagement. There are invitations to do that already sent out, and we're just waiting to hear back of who feels they can take it on. I can tell you of the groups that have responded. One said, "Oh, my gosh, we could not do this right now. We don't have the organizational capacity." And two have said, "Yes, we're ready." And so, we really are making it a careful invitation and spending some time talking with these nonprofits about how the engagement in the regional plan can build mutual capacity for the needs of the people they serve. And with that, I will stop for a moment and take questions before I invite Alex Steinberger to dive into what is scenario planning and what are the technical aspects of it. And of course, Melissa and Jess McNeely from the county are also here to help me answer questions.
I'm facilitating this. Okay, I love that. City Council member, Jim McCarthy?
That would be me. Thank you, Ms. Horstman, Chairwoman. Metroplan is just released for public comment, "Strive Forward," which is very similar to what you're doing, but the focus, of course, is on transportation. And they have like two ways of approaching it in the same report. One is called onward, which is kind of continuation of the way things have been done historically. And then, upward, which is a little more ambitious, like to try to meet carbon goals, reduce miles traveled, et cetera. So, my question is, how does the regional plan and strive forward, how do they kind of interact with each other? Because they complement each other, I would assume. So, comment, thank you.
Thank you. The strive-forward effort was coordinated especially with the regional plan outreach early on because we were working through the same data and talking through a lot of the same issues with the public. We've been coordinating to make sure that we are branded clearly and people know these are not exactly the same projects, but there's lots of overlap between what people see in the draft Metroplan document and things we will be discussing as we start to build the regional plan. However, the strive-forward effort is only a five-year plan. So, if it's adopted this year, it'll be up for re-adoption in 2028, which will kind of be at the beginning of when this plan is effective. So, they aren't really timed to be perfectly coordinated. There's some things that strive-forward has sort of bifurcated into their two approaches that we will look at and hopefully be able to unify how we will focus on those things throughout the region. Remember, too, that the five-year plan for Metroplan's primary purpose is to identify projects for transportation that can receive federal funding, and the regional plan can talk about all kinds of locally funded projects that are really beyond the scope of that document, though they clearly interact.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you. So, my question is, what are the efforts to make sure that all different communities in the Flagstaff metro area that are covered by this plan are engaged so that they have a voice in this plan?
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. One of the things we did at the visioning workshops was we asked everyone to come into the meeting and put sort of a dot on a map that says, "Where do you live? Where do you work? Where do you play?" So, that was actually an effort on our team's part to evaluate, when we send out this general engagement opportunity, who is showing up when they see an ad or get a postcard in the paper? And where are we seeing gaps in the community where people maybe got the postcard, but they maybe don't understand what their role could be, or we might need to do a little more lift to get outreach in those areas? We certainly identified a few parts of Flagstaff that participated at lower rates. Sunnyside is one of those locations. Pineol Brannon is another. And so, in identifying these community-based organizations, we tried to pay attention to organizations that have existing relationships in some of those areas that didn't show up to the visioning workshops. And we want to build strategies with those partners that are really carefully designed for the populations that haven't come yet. One of the ways we're doing that for upcoming workshops is we will have a meeting, one of the meetings, first of all, all four workshops will have childcare available if people register ahead of time. And then, the second thing is the Saturday one on April 1st will also have a Spanish-language facilitator available, and we will translate the workshop materials for that workshop into Spanish as well. Spanish-speaking residents of Flagstaff generally have participated at very low rates in land use decisions. Even when we were working on things related to Sunnyside, it tended to be, in areas where we know there's Spanish-speaking constituencies, it tended to be English-speaking relatives or business owners that showed up to those meetings. So, we're hoping that some of these efforts will bring more people to the fold.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a follow-up actually to the Vice Chair's questions, and that is, is what can we do as a city council and Board of Supervisors on getting that word out and that message out to these community organizations to ensure that we do have diverse and meaningful responses?
Thank you, Chairwoman Horstman. We will be getting the advertising out for the public workshops starting this week. And so, we will certainly get an email out to the board and to the city councils so you know what media is going out and can help share it. We also would invite you to come observe the meetings if you would like and help us think through the problem, too. How to get a diverse and well-represented engagement process underway is not something that we can just do from the planning offices. It really takes feedback and constructive feedback, so if we need to keep making adjustments, we will keep doing that. The efforts, and I know Alex will talk a little bit about what is scenario planning, and we have these four workshops scheduled, but if we miss a constituency, if we look at who shows up for these four workshops and we think, "Man, there is a group that didn't come that we really need to reach out with," we actually have given ourselves two or three more weeks to go try and pull together some fast, rapid engagements in those communities, and we will be evaluating that as we go through the next set of workshops as well.
Thank you. Other questions?
I think with that, I would invite Alex to join us on camera, and I'll help him advance his slides.
All right. Thank you, Sarah, and good evening, supervisors and council members. My name's Alex Steinberger. I'm a managing partner at Cascadia Partners, and as Sarah said, we are the consultants helping with the scenario planning portion of the regional plan update. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about scenario planning, but I think it's helpful, before we talk about what scenario planning is, we talk about how it's different from the way things were done for most of the 20th century. And through that time, the plans that most major American cities came up with looked a lot like this. They were very big thinking, and they all were, they all shared the same assumption about the future. Next slide. And most of those plans were planning for a future that looked a lot like this. We thought that by the middle of the 20th century, we'd be zooming around in flying cars, and who'd heard of anything like gridlock or traffic? But what ended up happening, next slide, is that there were some...
Can I pause you for a second? So, I'm not seeing this on the stream, so I would imagine the public isn't either on that?
Are you seeing it now? Supervisor Ryan?
No, not seeing it.
Supervisor Ryan, I'm restarting the share right now.
There it is. Okay, thank you.
We can, maybe we'll back up just one slide just for Supervisor Ryan's benefit. So, this was the future that we were all gunning for, and there was actually quite a few things in the next slide that we got right. We did a pretty good job of predicting things like self-driving cars and GPS and freeways and their ability to allow growth to expand outside of our cities into suburbs. However, there were some unintended consequences of planning for that one future that we did not anticipate. Things like traffic, next slide, and all sorts of other things that we never could have imagined. Gas prices going sky-high, working from home, pandemics, climate change, the decline of brick-and-mortar retail. All these things were never considered throughout most of the 20th century as we were building our cities. Next slide. And so, this way of planning, where you take your assumptions today and just sort of roll them forward into the future, just really doesn't work anymore. And that's where scenario planning is really, really effective. Next slide. Because what scenario planning allows you to do is to consider the possibility of multiple futures, things that might knock you off track and may pull you away from the future that you envisioned. It's a way of planning for uncertainty that allows the regional plan to respond to lots of different potential outcomes in the future. Next slide. And so, scenarios, I always like to remind people, they're not plans in and of themselves. They're like crash test dummies. We learn what we can from them, and then we move on. They're just a way to test different policies and ways of doing things and looking at what their impacts would be in the future. Next slide. And one of the great things about scenario planning, in addition to being really working hand-in-glove with public engagement, is that it also allows us to use technical tools that bring data into the decision-making process. So, as part of scenario planning, we'll actually be able to sort of forecast various benefits and also negative aspects of doing things a certain way, and it'll help us make a more informed decision about the best way to plan for the region's future. Next slide. So, a little bit about the process. Right now, we are in what's called the exploratory scenario planning phase, which you see all the way over there to the left. We're working with a group of technical advisors, and soon, we'll bring in the public to help us think about some of the uncertainties that we need to be dealing with and thinking about in the future as we develop this plan. And then, from those uncertainties, we'll develop a series of policy-focused scenarios that eventually will be brought to the public, and they'll get to select the one they think does the best job at advancing the region's goals. And that preferred scenario will then form the basis, among other things, of the future growth illustration and also the, some of the goals and policies contained within the regional plan. Next slide. So, as I mentioned briefly just a moment ago, scenario planning, aside from being a very data-driven process, it's also very focused on public engagement. The public really is the core of the process. And as Sarah mentioned, there will be a handful of workshops that are scheduled for the end of this month and the beginning of April, where the public will get to roll up their sleeves and actually create their own scenarios that are then going to be translated into a modeling software called Urban Footprint that will give us some of those great data insights about trade-offs associated with different policies and ways of growing in the future. Next slide. The purpose of the workshops this month and the beginning of next are to educate the public about scenario planning, kind of like we're doing with you all today, to introduce this idea of critical uncertainties for the region, the things that are really important that could potentially impact the region in a really major way, but that we don't really know necessarily are going to come to pass. We'll also be presenting the idea of a business-as-usual scenario, so what would happen in the region if we changed nothing about the way we do things today? And most importantly, the participants are going to get to play a scenario creation game where they'll be developing their own scenarios for the region's future. Next slide. Just to give you a bit of a preview of that game, we are about to test it with staff this coming week, but it basically allows participants to plan out where they want growth to happen on a map of the region, but specifically in response to some external factors that are affecting the region. So, in this example, they're planning for a future where the region grows a lot more than we expect, and then the other versions of that future that other participants will get to react to. Next slide. And these workshops are going to be really critical to the process. The maps and priorities that participants express in those meetings are going to be translated directly into the scenarios that we model and influence the policies that we test in the scenarios later in the process. Next slide. And all of the maps that participants create are going to be digitized. They're going to all become data and inform the scenarios in a really meaningful way. It's not like we're just looking at them and then moving on. There's a very clear connection between what every participant in the process provides and the analysis that we do. and the analysis that we do later on when we're creating scenarios. Next slide. This is an example of what that looks like from another project in another region, where you can see we can aggregate all of the information that we get from a map exercise across many different locations, participants, days, months, when the engagements occurred. And then we can start to zero in on where there's agreement around various themes. And we can even further segment that information based on where the participant participated in the process, what sort of a participant they were, what group they belong to, or what their expertise was, and also what external challenges they had to respond to when they played the game. Next slide. And ultimately, this input will allow us to create a series of modeled scenarios with all kinds of data attached to it, and those will be presented to the public through a scenario choosing process. And through that process, the public will provide input and help select a preferred scenario, which will ultimately become the basis for the future growth illustration and some of the goals and policies in the plan. Next slide. As I mentioned, there are four workshops currently scheduled. Sarah mentioned that there may be a few ad hoc additional meetings scheduled as needed, but these are the four that are currently scheduled, and we would very much encourage you to help us publicize these, to try to get as many folks to them as possible. And of course, you all are welcome to attend and participate as well. We would love to see that. Next slide. And there are going to be some opportunities for you to participate in the process beyond these initial workshops. Later in the spring, we'll be reviewing the results of the workshops and developing themes or narratives that will then get modeled in our scenario planning software. And then in the fall, we'll be presenting the results of the modeled scenarios on what we call report cards, which will show how each scenario performs across a range of different performance indicators. Next slide.
That's it.
So here, I'll hand it back to Sarah, and I believe we're going to pause for some questions if anyone has any.
Uh, Mayor?
Well, thank you. I love this scenario planning. This is great, and I think that this is what the public needs and what we need in order to envision what our choices lead to. I'm wondering whether these scenarios will include economic impacts such as cost of infrastructure, maintaining that infrastructure, congestion, you know, when we have the discussion all the time about increasing density or keeping with land use patterns that we've had in the past, and I think that it's really important to be able to see those differences.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And yes, the answer is yes. There'll be a range of different performance indicators, as I mentioned. We haven't settled on the exact indicators that will be used, but we do have the capability of reporting out things like greenhouse gas emissions, vehicle miles traveled, operations and maintenance costs, and capital costs associated with new infrastructure and maintaining infrastructure in each scenario at a very general kind of comparative level. And we've also, we're also able to report out a range of other indicators around things like housing costs, housing mix, employment mix, things of that nature.
And I would add, Mayor Daggett, that in addition to what the Urban Footprint software can actually put out, the city staff is also planning to take some of what we learn and investigate what other things with staff and experts we need to be pulling into the report cards, which is really what the tool people will have to talk about the scenarios when we're at that scenario choosing phase. One of the things that the city is investing in that will be part of that is a land suitability and availability analysis, which will give us some really technical information to cross-reference. There may be an area where we see people put down a lot of chips and say, we really would like to focus the growth in this area, but the availability and suitability analysis may tell us what obstacles we might have to seeing that kind of development. And so when we get to the policy, some of it may not all be ready at the report card stage, but by the time we get to policy translation, those will be really important pieces of information to have for whatever committee or group is put together to help review those as staff is creating drafts.
Yes, City Council member- I'm sorry, City Council member Harris.
Okay, so I know you know this, but I'm going to say it anyway. We know how important it is when we do processes like this to make sure that all segments of our community are involved, because if they're not, then some, their neighborhoods may be adversely affected by the decisions that other people that go to those events make. So how are we going to really ensure that those voices are heard so that those neighborhoods are not negatively impacted by the decisions of people who do and can attend those meetings?
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I think that the community-based organization effort of bringing on nonprofits to help assist with that outreach is going to be really critical to that. But I also think just our overall participation approach of we have this outline and the model, but we are stopping and evaluating how effective our outreach is and listening to the feedback that the public has of who is missing at each phase and making sure if we need to slow down or do a little additional work or make phone calls or pull people in differently, that that is an ongoing piece of how we're talking about it. And also to be really transparent about who has shown up and where we are missing voices, and to keep that in the forefront of the conversation.
And I feel really comfortable with you because you did that during the Southside Neighborhood Plan, so I'm hoping that we're following that same kind of process so that we are able to make sure everybody's in there. So I just wanted to ask that question, just to make sure.
Yeah. Councilmember Harris, if you think we could do better, we always want to hear from any member of the board.
And by the way, that's where we come in, too.
Yes.
To make sure that we get these communities, especially marginalized communities, that are difficult to bring to the table, that they get to that table.
Right. And two of the examples I can give right now is that we are going to, in addition to our public workshops, host a field trip for some students from Flagstaff High School here at City Hall and have them walk down and do the workshop here with us, specifically targeting the Native American Club and the Hispanic Heritage Club at Flagstaff High. And then we're also going to go to the Montoya Center, the senior center, and show up at a few of the high-value meals and do little luncheon learns and also try and provide a focus group there for our low-income elders. And so those are the kinds of things that if you have an idea of a place we could be in this March to April timeframe, we would love to hear that, not just from all of you, but from anyone in staff or the community who knows some things going on that we could tie into.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Chair Horstman and Mayor. Just to, I just needed some more clarification on these game boards that were spoke about. If someone's putting a chip down somewhere, is there, I wasn't really clear, is there like a consequence to say, okay, you know, when you move here, if you put your chips here, it will create a need for X, Y, Z over here? I mean, is there an interaction like that, or they're just kind of putting their chips where they think without being communicated, okay, what that looks like, and the bigger picture is this would also have to be brought in? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'll ask Mr. Steinberger to jump in and answer first.
So from the perspective of infrastructure and hazards of things like fires and floods, which we know are going to become more frequent and unpredictable, there is some feedback there that is communicated to the participants. So they know that if they want to put a bunch of growth in an area that is going to be more prone to wildfire hazards or flood hazards, that that's something that, you know, may be a consequence. And that's also some, one of the uncertainties that they're going to be dealing with is climate change impacts that are roughly around what we've seen in the recent past versus even more severe climate change impacts that we may not have foreseen. So from that perspective, they're going to be thinking about the implication of where they put growth. Infrastructure is something that we can highlight as we go through the process. That may not have been your intention, but I think that's a good, that's a good idea to make sure that folks are aware of the infrastructure that would be needed to serve growth in certain areas.
Other questions, members of the board or members of the city council? I have one here then, and that is the scenario planning, which is also very exciting, and I'm going to be interested to see how that plays out. Is this going to be available in the scenario planning and the game board that you're referring to for the public workshops that we've got here at the end of this month?
That's correct.
Good. All right. Thank you.
In fact, I think we just picked up the first hard copy of them from the mailroom about half an hour ago, so that's how hot off the presses it is.
Other questions? Take it away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm very sorry, Matt. Supervisor Ryan.
All right. Thanks, Madam Chair. Actually, you know, I'm trying to process this, and, you know, I'm obviously data-driven, very important, you know, to have the informed information, but I was kind of wandering in two similar directions, the mayor as well as Councilmember Harris. You know, just knowing you're going to have different constituencies out there, not just those that don't access, but those that are considering impact, which, you know, begs for how we keep people involved. I like the idea of nonprofits, but I'm not completely sold on nonprofits. You have business elements that could be impacted, you know, return on investment or cost benefit that might happen, happen associated with this. And as I, you know, am processing it, I know everybody wants us to walk line in step, and we want to try and do that, but we're also representing individuals, constituencies out there that we want to, just as had been discussed, ensure their voices there. Sarah, here, how do you bring those people in? That's important. The other piece of it, though, and I don't want to get ahead, I'm trying to, are we doing inductive or deductive? Are we breaking it apart or are we building it up? It seems like we're building it, we're moving our way through this, and so I wanted to remain quiet on some of this. But if we come to obstacles or a certain area of indecision, a challenge, that's where it begs for the question of how do we, as board, as council, get an update associated with it, and if necessary, make suggestions on solutions. Don't want to insert ourselves entirely. You don't want to top down associated with it. We want to hear from the people, but the process is being guided by a committee, and there are pieces that we watch for. So these things are rolling around in my head as you're suggesting this. We want to build in the factors to include people's voices, how you bring, I've got a lot of questions thrown in here, sorry about that, but, you know, I'm just trying to understand the mechanism associated with it. I probably confused you by now, but-
Supervisor Ryan, I would appreciate if you'd restate your question.
There you go. Restate the question. Yeah, I'm trying to process what your recommendations are in what you have here. So if we're doing a data-driven component, I like what the mayor was asking, do you have economic built in or return on investment, you know, cost benefit associated with it? The, we haven't quite gotten to the pieces of when we pause in different areas. I'll wait until you go through your presentation associated with that. So I'll hold it right there. I'm not going to ask a question. Just a little bit of my thinking as I'm processing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor. Other questions? Comments? All right, Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, and thank you, Alex, for joining us. I know you're probably going to log off, so thanks. So I actually think Supervisor Ryan gave me a very excellent segue. Now, now that all this is churning in your head, here's where we are, here's what we've committed to, here's what's coming out to the public, here's how we're gathering things, we're going to need to talk about how to process it. And staff, of course, we have plans on how to create our spreadsheets and make sure we're putting reports out and know that this is very, very transparent, and people know who's showing up, who we're hearing from, what we're hearing, and that that's part of what's on the website all the time, and it stays as up to date as we have the capacity to keep it. But at some point, we have to start discussing the hard trade-offs. And I think that was when we started meeting on this about a year or two ago, a piece we really highlighted was the current plan really tried to be everything to everyone and then didn't accomplish much, to be really honest. When you look at all the 97 metrics we tracked, really very few of them moved in the direction that we wanted them to. So that's the hardest part of this, is we can gather and we can talk and we can start to have these critical uncertainties, but at some point, we have to get together and make some decisions about what we are going to do with these uncertainties and with these potential futures. And as we've been talking about this, the pattern of having an advisory committee for the regional plan update is something we've done every time previously. It's been a little different each time, and there was lots of feedback on the last advisory committee that it did not function in the way that people wanted it to. It sort of started with an unclear scope, and it started at the very beginning, and the people who participated, some of them sort of dropped out from public participation fatigue, and the people left behind were very committed and worked very hard, but it didn't achieve all the objectives we had of the kind of advisory committee we wanted. And that advisory committee was very important for the step that Alex called policy translation. So we pick a preferred scenario. We have to turn that into a functional map that a planner at the front counter at the county or at the front counter at the city or in a pre-application meeting can explain to an applicant what it means and how it pertains to their property. It just functionally is something we have to accomplish. And then we also have to have goals and policies that inform the zoning code updates and subdivision code updates we do, the transportation policies we set as a community. And so there's the sort of softer policy side, and then it really has, the document has to function with the development review processes that we have and want to have. And so a committee can be really helpful in doing that. And so there's some key points of discussion for committee formation. The timeframe, which we're kind of in the middle, so we can give you some information on that. It's objectives and scope, the number of members, the rules and procedures that they have, and the method of soliciting and making appointments. And so we met, Melissa and I, and Jess McNeely and Michelle McNulty met with the clerks for both the county and the city back at the beginning of January, and we wanted to let them get through the election stuff, and started this discussion and said, well, what are the ways we could form a committee that is legal and would work and has some track record we'd feel comfortable with, and what should we do about that conversation? So the next few slides are to bring that really kind of trade-off to you, and I hope the clerks will chime in if there's an aspect of this that they can help with. So overall, staff just recommends we have these kind of principles at the front of pulling a committee together. We need a diverse group that represents a wide variety of interests and community perspectives. Having a- Having a group that will be like-minded and agree very quickly on everything will probably not serve the tough trade-off conversations, as well as having one where people can be open-minded and hear a diversity of opinions. Um, no matter what selection you make on how a committee should be formed, staff's very committed that all meetings are recorded and open to the public in a way that allows comments under whatever rules of order occur. So, though we will talk about which ones legally will be required to follow open meeting law, the principles of open meeting laws should apply to anything we choose here. Um, we think the group should be ready to start meeting in August 2023, which gives us about five months to form a committee. Um, we also think, given that the last time the committee was about 21 individuals and had several, regularly had meetings canceled due to lack of quorum, we think the ideal size should be no more than 12 to 15 individuals, which is tough, because we're asking 12 or 15 individuals to represent the diverse perspectives of 100,000 people. So, selection of this committee is careful, it is important, and it is something we really want to have a robust conversation about. So the option that staff is recommending, and we have other options for your consideration as well, is the one used most recently for the City of Flagstaff Bond Committee. Um, this process, and I would ask the clerk and the city manager to chime in on this as well, um, was that each councillor or board member, this is sort of how we would apply it in this case, would provide two nominations of people who might serve on the committee to city and county manager. The city and county manager, who are both sitting here, and would uh, review and invite 12 to 15 members of the community based on who nomi, is nominated. Um, this is a pretty swift process, it can be done in three or four months. Um, it's very flexible because of its ad hoc format, it allows us to um, have the kind of conversations about what rules apply and how they meet and how often and when, in a really um, unique way, they could, for instance, the committee could hold its own workshop. It doesn't have to sit here at a dais and follow Robert's rules, it can put other kinds of engagement opportunities with committee members together. Um, and it also can ensure diversity, one of the benefits of this is that the city and county manager can look at the groups of people who are nominated and try and find a best fit across the whole community on who can participate. Um, open meeting law is not required by the state for this kind of committee, but we certainly could follow all those principles. Um, and then another con to this is that it's not a committee that would be directly appointed by you as elected officials, which could be a con or could be a pro depending on how you perceive it. So I guess before we move on, I think what I'd ask if um, the city manager or the clerk have anything they would like to add on this method and how it um, went when we did it for the bond committee?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Board of Supervisors. My name is Stacy Salzberg, I'm the Flagstaff City Clerk. Um, thank you Sarah, um, she did mention that we did meet to talk about this process. And um, in terms of the bond committee and how that formation went, how that group went, um, it went very well. The process was um, you know, it took a little bit to get to the, the makeup of the group, but once the group got convened, um, we held very regular meetings, they were open to the public, they were recorded, uh, minutes were taken, so we were following all of the open meeting law requirements, but it was a, a less formal committee, um, or a commission if you will. Um, and it worked really well for the purposes that we were trying to accomplish. Um, as a clarification, should, at least for the city, if city council wanted to make those appointments officially, we'd have to go through the process of creating a commission, um, which as you know, is held within our city code. Um, so there's a process, um, a pretty intensive process, um, that that goes through, including an ordinance, first and second read, adoption, those sorts of things, there is quite a bit of a waiting period as well. Um, so I hope that gives a little bit of um, context to the, the bond committee and how it worked really well for the, the purposes that we were looking for, and I think that this committee could be a s, a similar structure and um, out, out, outcome. Thank you.
I would echo, I thought it was a good process, and it did take uh, about three months to um, get the committee up and, and running. Uh, I liked, for the reasons that the clerk just stated, I liked the uh, approach of having this be a manager appointment and avoid a lot of formality at the dais. The council actually gave us recommendations, and as good managers, we went with those recommendations, uh, but, and, and we would in the future. But where we deviated was very important. Um, there was a, a point in this process where we did not feel there was enough diversity, uh, not just from a ethnicity standpoint, but diversity in terms of representation from the community, different demographics, and so we endeavored to uh, make sure there was better diversity, and I think we did so with success. Uh, as to the process, once the committee uh, was functioning, our first order was to uh, prepare a charter, and we did that, and that's when the things like Robert's rules were laid out. Uh, quorum, uh, and I want to talk about that in a second, uh, was, was established meeting schedule, which was arduous, it wa, rigorous I should say, you know, every week for several months. Um, yeah, pretty rigorous schedule, and uh, on the topic of quorum, you know, we had 21 people on that committee, but we, uh, the committee deliberate, I say we liberally, the committee did all the work here, we guided. Um, the committee established a quorum that did not represent an affirmative majority. Um, it was something less, and I can't remember what it was, but out of 21, I think it was something like eight or nine was needed to establish quorum. So business could proceed in those instances where we didn't have uh, great attendance. By the way, attendance was generally pretty good. Uh, the other thing that was established was uh, that there would be no stepping back. Uh, if somebody missed a meeting, it would be up to them to get the notes, and on that subject, every meeting was recorded, uh, and uh, open to the public. So, a lot of successes, uh, I would suggest um, that the 12 to 15 members be considered carefully, it seems a little bit on the light side to me. Uh, if you can make an adjustment with quorum to make sure that business continues, you, you might want to see a few more people, it's just a comment. Um, I think I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions.
Members of the city councillor board, uh, yes?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Um, I'm a little concerned about the diversity part. For instance, if all of the board members and the city council members, when they made the recommendations, just hypothetically appointed someone with an environmental perspective, well, what if we need some home builders on this, you know, as an example, and none of them were suggested by the committee? I mean, I could see that as a potential problem. So maybe Mr. Clifton could address that.
Well, I, thank you, council member, I think it's a very good comment, uh, and we did strive to make sure we had diversity in, in terms of the interest groups in the community. We had members from real estate industry, uh, who sat on the chamber board, as well as housing advocates, as well as climate action advocates. Um, yeah, we tried to check all the boxes on, on that, and, and looking back on the many, many discussions that occurred, I, I thought that there was pretty good balance in the room, good diversity represented.
So I guess we need to just kind of go through the process and hope for the best, and if you see that there's something lacking, then maybe we could have another round of uh, suggested appointments or something like that.
May I? Um, I would also like to add that in that committee format, it does allow um, for the city manager, the county manager, that if they see there's a gap somewhere, we're able to respond very quickly to that, so we can identify somebody within the community, ask them to participate without having to go through a very formal process that we're used to with our commission. So I just wanted to add that that particular structure did lend itself well, um, to kind of being a little bit nimble and being able to fill those gaps appropriately.
Absolutely, thank you, con, uh, council member, appreciate that. And I guess if this is a, a county and city manager-directed uh, group, then they had that, they would have that authority to do that. And, and, and I understand that, and I understand you did that for the, the bond um, committee, and I would assume we would do the same if in fact we went with this option, right?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Um, my question is about the representatives from the county that were appointed by supervisors, would those have to be rural, in other, in other words, outside of the City of Flagstaff representatives, or would, could they also be representatives from inside the City of Flagstaff as, like, for example, District Two right now has rural and urban, but in the future will have only urban, and in that case, would uh, those appointees or those nominations be uh, okay for, to be coming from the urban setting?
Chair, Mayor, Supervisor Vasquez, I, I think the discussion needs to lead to that point, because um, when we're looking at, at um, typically the representation, and it would, of course, it would be at the macro level, micro level, the geographic representation's going to be important in terms of how we, how we int, integrate, um, you know, the county being as, as large as it is, what is the most meaningful participation for those county residents? Is it those that would be within the FMPO area? Because at some point, the work that, that this initiative is, is going to be focused on, it may be less relevant the further you get out, so I guess we would, that, we would be looking at that as a discussion item, uh, because I think we would, you know, depending on, on the individuals that are expressing interest, and then pegging those individuals, you know, like a, like a grid saying, you know, here are the types of individuals or representative, representatives we want to, to, to have represented as a community of interest, put out um, the solicitation for participants, and then start kind of putting, slotting those into those representative areas, kind of like we would do in nonprofit boards, you know, you kind of do your grid, what do we, what are the characteristics of, of the group that we're seeking, uh, put solicitation out and then see where people fall into.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
He answered it.
Oh, I love that, so, you know, only comment I would, I would make is, I am concerned 12 to 15 isn't enough because of that. Uh, you know, I think that's something to look at, I know you, we have to find that, that, you know, that happy medium between an effective board that can actually get the job done, and a board that's, that's broad enough to be able to have all the diverse interests, so. Other comments, questions? Yes?
Here, here.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, oh, okay, sup, I'm sorry, did you have a question or?
No, I just said I agreed with you.
And, uh, thank you. Supervisor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, actually, I, you're hitting on pieces uh, that I was thinking about. Uh, I, you know, obviously, the commission method isn't a method that, that we use, uh, uh, more of an appointment uh, component, uh, there is uh, flexibility associated with it, you know, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, to Jim's point, uh, Councilmember McCarthy's point, um, uh, how, you know, how do we ensure uh, that we're trying to diversify, uh, same thing Chair Horstman was just talking about. Um, so, uh, what method, uh, great, uh, this is similar to what we did with the jail district also, what you did with your uh, uh, bond uh, group, advisory group. Um, but how did you get to bringing back or informing the council of uh, you know, what you were doing and modifications associated with that? Uh, one piece is, you know, the reason we have, you know, what we do is, you know, we're, we're trying to give our input and give guidance. Um, if you set up the managers' method, it's really good, it creates a flexibility associated with it, but there is the report back of, you know, okay, we're trying to work through it. Each one of us, uh, in our role is looking at different segments of the community, and, and that uh, back and forth dialogue is, is helpful just to, just to make sure that we're covering the community as well as we can.
Thank you, and I'm also going to point out that there are some other alternatives we're going to be discussing, uh, this is alternative one. Uh, one, one comment I will make with regards to alternative one, that I do love the, the flexibility of alternative one, I like the idea that it is a, uh, county and city manager appointed, so that the formal ru, uh, open meeting law rules do not have to apply, I mean, that can bog you down probably quicker than anything, but the intent of the open meeting law, the sunshine law aspect of that, it, you know, the spirit of the open meeting law is going to remain, I think that's also important. So, uh, in terms of option one, I do like the flexibility part of that. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I actually, I, my question would be, or maybe it's a suggestion, if this method were set up and say we did say we like the concept of moving forward with it, um, what I'm trying to insert in there is just uh, that back and forth, keeping the board and council informed and having that two-way dialogue there. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan, other comments, questions? If not, oh, I'm so sorry, Supervisor Begay, I see that red light.
Yeah, I think, thank you for the presentation, and um, I just want to add that, you know, I think um, I do agree that, you know, 12 to 15 members for approximately 100,000 people on the community, you know, that were, were, that's, that's being affected, I think we really need to look at those numbers. And then also the open meeting law, we've got to have some structure, I think, you know, in order to, to run, you know, uh, a, a meeting, because somebody can come back and, you know, challenge, and then what do we go by, what do we say at that point in time? And so, I just want to say, um, you know, I'm glad that this is, you know, a, a session that we're having, that, you know, we're all good, uh, having input, and, and I guess uh, the, the interest group and the intensity, you know, um, all these other areas that we need to consider, you know, I'm, I'm thankful that we're doing that, so I just want to say thank you to the, to county manager, and, you know, trying to put this uh, uh, group together. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Begay, other comments, questions, or let's go to alternative option number two.
Great, thank you Chairwoman Horstman. Um, so, we didn't feel we could make a staff recommendation here without explaining what the other options look like for this one in particular, and the reason these are not the staff recommended options is because they all have a piece of them that's a little clunkier and more difficult to manage, and take away some of that nimbleness that, that we talked about. So, we could use a formal commission appointment model, which is what we did um, between 2009 and 2014. Um, we would need a formal authority with a resolution um, for a joint body to be formed, an open call for applications for a joint commission. Um, the city usually appoints people to commissions by having each council member make appointments individually, but given the diversity and diverse perspective goal of this one, we'd actually recommend a special review of applications by, like, an oversight committee, that's kind of a blend of what we did for the census, where we had two board members and two council members that met more regularly to kind of go through things and help oversee our census budget, because we approved a big budget and then had to make a lot of medium-sized policy decisions along the way. Um, and so we'd kind of blend that into this model if we were to follow it. Um, the appointments would be brought to a joint public meeting for a vote, um, all those formal rules would apply. Um, the benefit, of course, is that the board and council are selecting the membership, um, and it's subject to open meeting laws, even though as we've said, we would provide um, a very transparent, sunshined process, um, no matter what. It also is a formal process that's open to all residents, um, and the recommendations are made straight from elected officials. There's sort of, the con side of the coin is sometimes for the same reason, um, it, this is a very time-consuming process, I put a note at the bottom for all of you that um, you probably have to have four to six joint meetings between now and August to carry this out effectively in this timeframe, and you're all very busy, and so, um, that may are, may be a deal breaker right there, or not. Um, there's also sometimes a limited amount of applications, um, I think that the clerks would tell you there can be a real ebb and flow, and there's not, just the, the step of having to apply can be a barrier to entry for some of the groups that have been underrepresented in this process historically. Even though I know everyone here would do our best to kind of draw those people out in the community, just the fact that you have to fill out an application can be sort of a, a barrier. Um, and this process last time had significant project delays, because we were skipping sometimes every because we were skipping sometimes every other meeting for lack of quorum. And we don't think that the traditional way we do these appointments could ensure diversity. So with our little tweak there, we think that kind of helps this process. But it's still not as nimble and we don't think it is as robust as maybe, as you said, going with a bigger committee that's appointed by managers and has different quorum rules. So are there any questions or would you like to discuss this option? Or do you want me to continue and talk about the next one?
Unless there are questions, I think you should go to option three.
So another alternative would be one that follows more of the Flagstaff Affordable Housing Plan model. The city's Board and Commission Manual allows us to appoint subcommittees. And so we could, and working groups. And so we could have the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission of the city and county create working groups. That can involve members of the community. It's usually selected by the commission and not by the elected officials. Of course, you select the commissioners. All working groups items have to go through the commission for review and approval before they end up in front of the council and board. This is the process we actually used, very similar to the one we used in 2001 for the regional plan with the modernization of our, our Board and Commission Manual. There's a pro in that all the findings you discuss go through planning and zoning first, which is the body that has to have hearings ahead of council and the board anyway when we follow the adoption process that's outlined in the state statutes. Board and council can send some informal direction to their commission. And it does have that, that opportunity to kind of involve more people because you've got an extra layer. But it's a pretty time-consuming process to have to go through three bodies to get a discussion going. And the open meeting law requirements for working groups are a little bit different as well. So we'd have to charter those groups, make sure they're, they're working along with their commissioners. Also, our planning and zoning commissions are pretty busy. They have, we've had a lot of development applications in the last few years. It doesn't necessarily look like their workload is slowing down. And they are volunteers as well. So you're asking volunteers to take on a role with an already busy docket to keep this process going. So those are some of the cons and pros we would see to taking that approach. And I will ask if anyone else from the staff would like to chime in on any of these and then happy to answer questions or further, hear further discussion.
Members of Board or City Council, any comments or questions on this? We have a recommendation that's been made for option one. And we received two additional options, option two and three, for consideration. And I know you're going to want us to go around this room and to get some feedback from every council member and every board member, correct? So before we have to do that, any comments or questions? All right. Well, I think it's some discussion and consideration time. So with that, anybody would like to start, or do I just start with Councilmember House?
I'm happy to start, Chair, so thank you. Just in, in looking at the three options that were presented, I definitely lean towards option one. I think it provides the most flexibility. It certainly seems to be the most appealing in terms of representation of the community and, and the ability to speak into that a little bit more directly. I do agree with the others that have spoken about the need to maybe reassess the number that's being proposed. I, I definitely feel like that option, though, also provides a lot more flexibility in terms of how we would set quorum for that group. So even if we have more membership, there's the flexibility allowance to shift that quorum and, and make that possible that I don't think exists with options two or three.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I am also in favor of option one and looking at increasing the number. I think we will need that for the quorum. Thank you.
Supervisor Begay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that option one is something I, I would like to see only because of the flexibility, the numbers of people that, you know, can be more. And then, of course, you know, we're looking at all sorts of groups, diverse, diversity. You know, I just really think that it's something that we can work with and that, you know, where there's, and each council board member would provide two nominations, you know, to the board too. So, which is the, um, county manager. So I think option one is something I can, I feel good about.
Thank you, Supervisor. Councilmember McCarthy.
I like option one with the option of going up to, say, 20 members.
Thank you. Mayor Daggett.
Thank you. Option one and the number of, of participants that you think is necessary for bringing us back a good project or a good recommendation.
Just turned it off. Councilmember Austin Aslan.
I suppose I'm, I'm glad option one exists because options two and three seem very fraught to me. And I'm of the opinion that we, we should go a little bit bigger. I don't know how much bigger. It could get very clunky. I also would just like to note there's 11 of us, I believe, if, if I do my math correctly. And if we're each offering two recommendations, that gets us to 22 potential members. And there's talk of making the, the board or the, the committee that large. So that's great. We might all get our recommendations listened to. But maybe we should have more than two, two recommendations in that case. And also, just really appreciate the fact that our, our city and county manager team would have ultimate discretion on, on what that would look like. Really appreciate the opportunity to provide input and suggestions to you, though.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vasquez.
Thank you. All right, I agree. Option one, sounds like it's the better option. It has less red tape. It gives the opportunity for more flexibility. I do agree that the numbers should be lifted some and we should look at some kind of modified quorum. If we do two nominations from each, that's 14 from city council and 10 from the supervisors for a total 24. So I don't know if we want to consider adding some more nominations and having, so that the managers both have a larger applicant pool of nominations to pick from, especially considering sometimes we nominate folks, but at the end of the day, they choose not to participate. So, but other than that, I like option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Ditto one. I love that. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Mayor. Option one also, and perhaps, you know, you mentioned it in the beginning where, you know, some people fall out. Life happens and stuff. So maybe having a core set of a board, but have alternates that can come in. You know, somebody's gone or sick or whatever happens in their life, so we don't have to come back and reappoint. But some, you know, the alternates can come to the meetings, but we have a voting core. And then if one person is out, then an alternate can come in, if that makes sense. But definitely option one seems to make the most sense and to get it through and be expedited and.
Thank you. Supervisor Ryan.
Oh, obviously, anything other than what everybody else selected. No, actually, I really, I, I like what's set up here. The idea of, as Aslan was just talking about, Councilmember Aslan. The, the feedback, where I was going before. To delegate completely over to the managers, we might know nuances in the community that they're not thinking about. That exchange back and forth of why they're selecting, who they're selecting. Are we missing somebody? Would be helpful. I, I would go with what Becky, Mayor Becky, said. Is whatever they think advisable. When you start to put these together, how did we get to such big numbers in the past? It was we were missing certain constituencies. And, and yet by the same token, as you heard from staff, we created, you know, a large number. And the larger the number, the more difficult functionality of that group, either by attendance and/or trying to get a cohesive conversation together and everybody gets input associated with it. So I would defer to staff and managers in, as they're evaluating. And if there's a little bit of updates that we give feedback to them, you know, they, we can, they can, might be able to put together a decent committee in that sense with it. On the alternatives, as Councilmember Matthews, alternates, I should say, had mentioned. The important thing with this, as we've learned with groups where we didn't set up a standing committee in the past, is the alternate should at least be tending X amount or something like that so that they're not starting fresh on the conversation. That, that has a way of interrupting. But having that available helps to overcome quorum issues as life happens, as she had suggested. So there are my thoughts on that. Thanks, Madam Chair. Did I change anybody's mind on any of the alternatives? Just kidding.
All right. Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Fowler. We may have lost her. I'll go ahead then and wrap it up. I also agree with what, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCarthy.
Just a quick thought. It might make sense to have the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission be a member of this committee.
All right. And, and just my two cents worth on here, I agree with the consensus of the group. I do like option number one. I think it gives us the flexibility that we need to get this done and get the job done. I don't think 12 to 15 is enough. I know why you want that. It does make sense. I just don't think it's enough. I just think this is a big county and big, big issues and the diversity that we want to be heard from our community is going to take more than that. I'd like to see an uneven number. 21 does, does seem to have a nice ring to it. And I think we can adjust the definition of quorum to deal with that. I, I don't have any problems per se with the alternate idea, except I do agree with the comment that was made. If there is an alternate, there needs to be a certain percentage of meetings that the alternate will attend. And that may get problems some because we're already asking those that are on the committee to be very, very active. And I think that'd be kind of a difficult. But I don't want to see, you know, somebody said, was, going backwards. You know, I, I think people need to stay up on it, attend the meetings. And if you're going to a meeting and all you're doing is recapping, you feel your time is being wasted. So I certainly wouldn't want to see that. I really like the idea to have the city and the county manager make the final decision on this. And I appreciate they're asking for our input. But I also think they need to make sure it's a fully diverse committee and may have to look beyond just our suggestions. So, thank you. Any other comments or closing for? Oh, yeah, I, now I see you, Supervisor Fowler.
I, I, I dropped off and now I'm back. So anyway, I'm on my, at my computer. Thank you so much. And I really am enjoying the conversation that's been taking place and all the presentations. So I'm just very thankful for that and just have a, I wish I was there in person. But just like, I'm not in space like Matt is, but I'm, I'm grounded here. And I am in favor of option one. And I just, I keep thinking about how the city, the, the Flagstaff Regional Plan and Coconino, you know, just the planning and the greater Flagstaff area has a huge impact through, has a ripple effect throughout the whole county since most of our, many of our residents do travel into Flagstaff to work and to live temporarily or work, live here during weekdays and move, go home on weekends. You know, there's so much movement and that take place and in the, in the planning. So I just think that the option one, as you were all having a conversation, it really needs to be very diversified and having these broad perspective with the vision of just people just not within the boundaries of the city. I understand it's the greater Flagstaff area, but it has a, a greater impact, far, far reaching. So I just wanted to make that comment and really appreciate it. Appreciate being on and being able to actually log in now. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. Any closing remarks from city council or board of supervisors?
I just want to let the record show that I do not know how to do my math. I was forgetting Councilmember Fowler because she wasn't on screen up there. But of course, seven plus five is 12.
You know, I think everybody did take notice of that, so. Sarah, did you get the information you needed from us?
We did on the first question.
All right.
Now, I know. It's a big set of decisions. And just to make everyone feel better, I was asked by the consultant to make a technical advisory group of only 15 people and no more. I definitely invited 18 people. So we, it is very hard to keep the number down and ensure that there's really enough knowledge types and expertise and community knowledge represented in these groups. So thank you for the discussion. Our last two slides, easy, we're almost there, is about plan adoption. If you'll remember, I always bring us back to our lessons learned. The last time we started the adoption process in the city and the county simultaneously. And because of the rules for major plan amendments in the county versus those in the city, there was a divergence of the regional plan. And so there's actually, the county actually adopted what we called the public hearing version. And the city adopted a later version that went through about 13 work sessions and then ended up being the one adopted and ratified. So for Melissa and I, who have been the co-managers of the products of that process, we've always kind of had to look and goes, is, is this what it says in the current one? Or is it in the public hearing one, which is what the county adopted? And we'd like to avoid as, getting two versions next time. So to that effect, we actually want to recommend that, now that we've decided how to form a committee, that this committee is going to review all the pieces and help us do the policy translation, the result of which will be a draft plan. The draft plan has to go out for a 60-day review. And so we will make a 60- or 90-day review available to everyone. And then they will receive what I hope is a very high volume of public comments. That's, I, I'd shoot for a high volume on this one, but, you know, some will be in depth, some will be on particular topics. Staff will compile all of those again and go back to the committee and say, here's where we had consensus on comments, here's ones that maybe there wasn't consensus on, and ask that committee to help us resolve areas that lack consensus. Our recommendation for the process from there forward is that the committee recommend a final plan and that we take it into a joint retreat with the city council, the board of supervisors, and both planning and zoning commissions. Where, like a budget retreat, you can go chapter by chapter through the document and look at the recommendations, discuss how we arrived at this point of having a final draft before we start public hearings. And the reason for that is, I think, that if you had one body that passed the document very quickly and didn't get as thorough a review versus another, part of this adoption process that feels like some questions weren't asked, it might feel like we did things a little out of order. And it will probably, I think the last time we did it, it took the city about 13 to 14 hours of work session for city council to work through the document. So we could be more effective in trying to do that all together with more of a retreat method. From there, our recommendation would be that the city start its public hearings. We have more, we don't have like a have-to-have-done. We have more, we don't have like a have-to-have-done-it-by-October-of-the-year requirement. It can take the time it needs. And we still then have to send it to the voters. So when council adopts a plan, a final plan, the next thing you have to do is send it to voters, and it could be voted up or voted down. The county might not want to adopt something that may not get adopted in the city. And so for that reason, we'd recommend that the counties start their public hearings either as major amendments, or maybe even if the timing is magical and awesome, that it be a new element of their updated comprehensive plan, because of course, the county's updating that simultaneously. So this is the order in which we looked at how we could sequence this to ensure that goal of having one document for both jurisdictions, as well as making sure all the elected and appointed officials who are required by law to review the plan get adequate time and the ability to get all their questions answered at this adoption phase, which is phase four on that visual map that we put up. So I don't have any alternatives for this, but we can shuffle the cards differently, and we've done it a few different ways. So I'm happy to answer any questions or get your feedback on this, the risks and rewards of approaching it this way.
Councilmembers, board members, any comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Chair and Mayor. Sarah, just a question, this is new to me. So the plan goes out to the city of Flagstaff voters, but they don't have, the county residents don't vote on this?
Councilmember Matthews, no, they do not, because the Title IX of the state statute and Title XI of the state statute have different requirements for the city and the county. So cities over 100,000 have to have voter, or cities over 50,000, I think it is, have to send it for voter ratification. And that's only a requirement of cities over 50,000. So if you're a property owner in Flagstaff but not a resident, you don't get to vote on the plan. If you are a property owner in the county and not a resident, you don't get to vote on the plan. If you are a resident of Flagstaff who doesn't own any property, you do get to vote on the plan. We have a little FAQ on this on the website, because it is a little confusing that some of the people, this plan effects are, get the opportunity to vote on it and others do not. But that is totally set up by the state statute and not something that we impose on the process. So it makes this a little more difficult.
Matt, Supervisor Ryan?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I like the idea of the retreat concept. As much as possible, we're trying to align our plan, that way we can work together. Last process started to incorporate other aspects that weren't consistent with what had built up, and the board stuck with the original associated with it. We could have adopted the modification on that, and if we can avoid that, that would be really, you know, the first time we did this, we linked it up quite well, and it was very consistent with them. So if we can avoid that, that would be really good. No matter what, though, it's a regional plan as much as possible. We try and align it, make sure it works together. By the same token, we are independent bodies and of governance with different constituencies or those that are impacted by the plan on that. I like that we meet together associated with it. No matter what, it probably wouldn't hurt for us to have our independent work sessions noting the implications that may occur under our jurisdiction if we took a look at it. And that's where, you know, I keep going back to kind of the text about, we have decision pieces. We want to try and assure we put together best plan as possible on this, but we also, in the end, have to adopt separately on this. I like what you're trying to do. I like it, how it's sequenced up. The only thing, you know, I would suggest is, you know, where you're saying, focus on reviewing final draft together. We should do that. By the same token, each entity from their legal side of things probably want a work session just to assure that they're aligning up quite well with that. And they were my observations that I have with this and the recommendations.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Any comments, questions? Otherwise, I think we'll do the same process. We'll, probably will be able to do it a little bit more expedited manner, but we'll see. Councilmember Matthews, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Chair. I support the sequencing that you have presented here today. It sounds like a good plan.
Councilmember Harris. Vice Chair?
Looks good. I especially appreciate the joint retreat.
Vice Mayor? Mayor? I love that. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, to be brief, I support the staff recommendation.
Supervisor Begay?
Same here.
Councilmember Sweet?
I'm in, support.
Councilmember House?
Ditto.
Supervisor Ryan?
Pretty much what I said. I support it, but we still need work sessions prior.
All right. We have a thumbs up with concerns. Supervisor Fowler?
I support as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I do support that as well. I do like the idea of trying to align our plan. I think that having one document for both jurisdictions would be ideal, and I also like Supervisor Ryan's comments that we should probably have, Coconino County as well as the city will have their own work-study sessions. But I really like the idea of having a joint retreat with the city and county on this. So thank you. Have we fulfilled that question?
You have. Thank you very much, Board and Council. We are very excited for what's next. I will definitely be following up with emails, and so Melissa, to let you know all the details about the upcoming public meetings, so you can share them with your constituents, and we'll be working with the clerks to follow up on committee formation in the next few weeks. So thank you so much.
And thank you for your hard work on this, both the county and the city. This is going to be a long process and in such an important process for both the county and the city as we move forward. So really appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
So there's been a request for a 10-minute break, so we're breaking for 10 minutes. All right. I think we're ready to get started again. Am I correct, staff?
No.
Was this what we figured out and somebody was supposed to call, that yours didn't get in?
No, ours, mine got in.
Well, mine didn't. I think mine's up.
Surely called this one?
So the next item is item number seven, post-fire flood mitigation and forest restoration, and this is just for our information only.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Chair, and members of the Council and members of the Board. Pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Lucinda Andriani. I serve as Deputy County Manager and Flood Control District Administrator, and just going to provide a quick update this evening on all things flood mitigation. Certainly, if you have questions, I'll be here to answer questions after, as well as certainly later as well, if anybody has any follow-ups. I think all of you have my cell phone number and know how to contact me if you need to, so don't ever hesitate to reach out. So this evening, first and foremost, I wanted to update, the update Council and the Board on the Parkway sediment basins project. As you know, the district last year had secured funding for not only forest rest, watershed restoration on forest, and we completed all those projects last spring before the monsoon season. We also secured funding through the Natural Resources Conservation Service EWPP program and completed everything upstream of the city except for the Parkway sediment basins project, which is located on a city-owned parcel just north of Linda Vista. So if you think, there's a little cul-de-sac there called Parkway, that's why it's called Parkway, and it's, it's down below Paradise Drive. So to give you a little bit of relationship there, I think you've been hearing about it from, from staff and me over the last couple of years. This project is designed expressly to reduce sediment. This is not a detention facility, but a sediment reduction facility. Stepping back about a month to five weeks ago now, in working, you know, we're working very collaboratively on all of our projects, including those that, within the museum flood corridor, which this is, within the museum flood corridor. The city is working through, as you're well aware, working through a process to engineer those projects that are downstream of this project, starting at Linda Vista, the box culverts there, all the way down through to the detention facilities at Killip School. And in that process, working through that routinely, you know, through that process, quickly, I shouldn't say routinely, but working through that process, you know, one of the commitments that the city and the district have, have made is that we will, through that engineering process, be running what we call the no adverse impact analysis, which really takes engineering at the various stages, usually 30, 60, 90, and we work with J. E. Fuller to model the engineering. And this is really important, so that during the engineering, if we need to modify the engineering to ensure that there are no impacts, either upstream or downstream of the projects that, that we're, we have the opportunity to make those modifications, that's very important, obviously, both legally and morally, that we do that and ensure to people that anything that's constructed by the city or the district is not going to create impacts beyond what they're experiencing now, right? And we have criteria that it has to meet and so forth. So that was run. There were some issues downstream of not this particular project, but the projects overall. I think they're at 30% or some fairly, you know, early in that process. That's, that's good. This is how this is supposed to work. We have the opportunity now, the city does, to go back and look at that and make some tweaks and modifications. But that did then delay us in that the city wanted to look at this site and was there another alternative that should be potentially considered for this site. So we all agreed that that was really important for everybody to step back and give the city the opportunity to do that additional analysis and look at that, did that need to occur or not? And the consensus coming back out of the city and the district concurred was that, no, that it could move ahead as a sediment reduction facility. So we are doing that, but now, given the timeline and the additional snow that we have seen this year, in communication with the contractors that we're working with, we haven't selected a final contractor, but in those communications, it's, it's pretty clear to all of us, we've done the calculations, what would be involved to try to complete all three of the sediment basins? We cannot complete all three before monsoon. So we're going to focus now on completing the, there's two large basins, two larger basins, and one smaller basin. We're going to complete one of the two larger basins, the one furthest to the south or closest to Linda Vista. So we'll in fact be selecting the contractor tomorrow and then probably issuing an, issuing a notice to proceed fairly quickly with, for that project to be able to move forward. The district and the city do plan to complete those sediment basins this fall. I think the belief is, within the city, the analysis that they done, that they have done, and we have all done over the last year-plus, is that the additional sediment reduction will be beneficial to those downstream, to those downstream projects that the city's moving forward with, with the initiative funding, the bonding funding that you were able to secure, which, congratulations on that. That was a big and real endorsement for that, that package. So that's the update on Parkway. We intend to start construction as soon as physically possible. There'll be a lot of moisture in that area for a while because of the, not that we're going to see flooding, but we're going to see some moisture going through there, that area. So they'll start as soon as they can and move forward with that with the intent of completing before monsoon season. So I think in terms of the impacts downstream, given the timeline that everybody's on now, given construction, I don't think that's going to provide any, any issues to the city in terms of other projects that they have. So just, this is the plan, the overarching plan, and you can see that the, there's the three basins, those are kind of the, the condensed lines there show the topography of the basin, and it's the, if you're looking at this, it's the basin to the right of the red line. The red line is the demarcation between what will be constructed this fall and to the left or to the west, that's what will be constructed this fall, and the other basin to the, to the east will be constructed, or south, that is there, I get my directions backwards there, to the south will be constructed this spring. So that is the plan relative to Parkway. So we're excited to move forward, and we've communicated with NRCS, they are supportive of this change, they understand the need for the change, and we're marching forward. So now I'd like to just provide a brief update on things Schultz Pipeline flood mitigation. As you may be aware, the Board last week approved two funding agreements that have been provided, one from the Natural Resources Conservation Service for the first two sets, two projects out of the set of two applications that we applied. At that time, at, up until today, I literally just got the email that OMB at the federal level finally apportioned the funding to the EWP projects nationally, the 929 million that was approved by Congress and the President, they finally have apportioned those funds to the NRCS. But in working with the NRCS, they identified enough funding for us, about nine and a half million, for us to be able to move forward with the two, first two projects that we want to pursue this, in the neighborhoods this, this spring, early summer. And those two neighborhoods are the Wupaki Trails, which is the furthest to the north, and then the flood corridor just to the south of that, Brandis Way. So those measures will, will move forward. And now I'm expecting, he just sent over to confirm the numbers for the rest of the funding. And so we will be moving forward with, we'll, should be getting fairly soon, I would say within a week, the other funding agreement to take to the Board of Directors of the Flood Control District to approve the remaining funding, which is about, about another 40, 40-plus, 40 to 50 million when you add on a technical assistance as well. So, so that's very exciting, and the Board approved the acceptance of that smaller set of funds last week. The remainder will probably go at, soon. So, and then in addition to that, they approved a good neighbor authority agreement, much like we used for museum, for the on-forest measures, which are total 42 million, and that, and this is a result of the impact to all nine watersheds, including Schultz Creek. And so we're, which is probably going to be in the ballpark of 500, 5 million for watershed restoration measures on that flood corridor, and the 42 million is for all-inclusive of that and the other eight watersheds. So the plan right now is to, in terms of the on-forest measures, is to complete on-forest measures in Wupaki Trails, that, the watershed that feeds into Wupaki Trails, that's the Lennox Watershed, and then again, the one to the south, Brandis, the Thames Watershed, and then Schultz Creek as well, to complete all of that work as well. and then Schultz Creek as well, to complete all of that work, as well as some less involved work, it's more repair and some, some modifications to the on-forest measures in Campbell Paintbrush, south and north Paintbrush. So those five watersheds will all go to construction this spring, early summer. In terms of Schultz Creek, as we've said all along, the, the upper area of that watershed is in Spotted Owl Habitat, and we will, the earliest we'll be able to go into that area to construct will be this fall. We are not allowed to construct during the Spotted Owl fledgling cycle, and so that will be this fall. But we do intend the alluvial fan, and we're using a little bit different technique there this time called pond and spreading, but the alluvial fan work that we're doing above the city-constructed detention facility there at the Y, that work, from what we're being told right now, we can go ahead with that this spring. The NEPA on those projects, except for Brandis, that's been approved, but the rest has not yet been approved, but we're expecting approval sometime between the fifteenth and the end of March, so. And they know that we need to start as soon as we can on these projects to get them all completed within that timeframe. So that will certainly be beneficial to the detention facility there at, at the Y. We will still, though, need to come back in the fall and do a lot of the grade control work further upstream of that, roadwork and others, that's also contributing sediment downstream. In terms of the off-forest, the work within the neighborhoods, again, the goal is, and the ones that I identified, Wupaki, Brandis, is to go to construction, get the engineering complete, we're at seventy-five percent, we intend to complete that very soon, and go to construction no later than April first. Obviously, this is going to be complicated by the moisture level we have out there, but we're going to construct north to south and do the best we can to get as much done. The contractor understands that we'll, on all these projects, we will, we will be pushing the limits on the weather and everything to be able to get as much as we can get done, done. We did select the contractor today for all the on-forest work, that will be Tiffany Construction, as you know, they've done, they did the museum on-forest work as well as the NRCS work, and they also have done the vast majority of the, the work on-forest up in the Schultz area. So highly experienced, very, very specialized work, so we're really thrilled to have them back on the team, they're, they are critical. If we have any hope of getting this done, it will be that team that will get this done. So I think that covers everything, we have a corridor meeting with the Wupaki Trails area tomorrow night, and Supervisor, Vice Chair Vasquez will be kicking that off and working with that community again to get into construction as quickly as we can. Then additionally, let me change the slide here, we have some continuing to share the, how to communicate and the communications, I really want to applaud Sarah and the city team for the communications that have been supported, and we're continuing to work together on, we will be getting out of communication very shortly on Parkway to let everyone know in that, that area, in the museum flood area, what the plan is now and, and for the, for the future in terms of Parkway. So that concludes my remarks, if you have any questions, or I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, supervisors or council?
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you very much, and Jay will come up, Joe and Jay, Jay's going to kick it off, and then Joe will turn it over. And this next component is regarding the forest restoration initiative, and this is, we're at a really critical juncture with this effort, and I know Joe is going to share a study that he's in the process of nearing completion, still got some preliminary results, wanted to share this study, and we're going to be having a lot of discussion about that over the next several months, and this is really a critical issue, particularly for the city of Flagstaff, Fort Valley, everything downstream of the Upper Rio watershed, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jay.
All right, good evening, Mayor Daggett and Council and Board of Supervisors Chair, I'm Jay Smith, I'm the Forest Restoration Director for Coquigny County Flood Control District, haven't met some of you yet, I haven't been in front of some of the new council members, so appreciate the time here. We're going to give a quick update on where the Flood Control District is looking at, you know, we've been here talking about different things with forest restoration, the impacts of post wildfire flooding, and how forest restoration is the best way to prevent that from getting to that point, and how we have focused on Bill Williams Mountain up to this date, and now that we're far enough along and moving things, we've treated about five hundred acres on Bill Williams Mountain, we have about eight hundred acres left, and so we feel comfortable that we're ready to refocus some of our dollars and our time and efforts on the western slope of the peaks in the Upper Rio watershed. So the first step was to kind of reevaluate and have J. E. Fuller do another look at fire modeling on the whole side of that peaks, and then do some rain events on that so that we could really see where the water goes. So I'm going to let Joe talk about that, and then I'll come back up and discuss where we'd go with that information. So thanks, I'm going to, this is Joe Lovrich with J. E. Fuller Hydrology.
Yeah, hi, Mayor and Council and members of the board and supervisors, and Council and supervisors. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity tonight. Tonight is, I feel like I'm always the bearer of bad news with this stuff. It's not, it's not just for doom and gloom, but it's, it's looking at what is the potential for flood risk coming from the rest of the south side of the peaks, we've seen what portions of it do, so what, what could that look like? And, and that can provide some information with, and provide some groundwork then for what do you do about it? So the focus of this study is to, first off, we want to look at the potential burn severity that could happen across the whole face of the peaks. So if a fire were to happen, what does it look like? And then to, and then based on that, what is the potential flood risk down through the city of Flagstaff, so starting at Fort Valley, down through Cheshire into the city, all the way through the city? And, and along with that, we use all of these different studies to, to help further our modeling procedures and the science behind the flood risk modeling for, for post-fire floods. So that's a big component of this, and what this does is, it can help, help promote assistance determining the highest priority forest treatment areas, which, you know, is one way of, by reducing the flood risk, one way of doing that is by keeping fire out, right, and keeping the, keeping the burn severity at a minimum. So then that plays into a lot of coordination between the Forest Service and the county and the city and other partners. So, so let's, let's step into this just a little bit here. This is a perspective, looking aerially at, at the peaks. You can see Cheshire, you can see Fort Valley, you can see these swaths of the museum fire and the pipeline fire. And so the area we're modeling is basically bound by just north of Cheshire, and then Highway one eighty going out towards the Nordic Center. So this is all the Upper Rio watershed, it feeds into, to Fort Valley, kind of Forest Hills area, and Schultz Creek, it's kind of three main areas, if you will. And what we wanted to do is to look at, this as kind of worst-case scenario, and then, and then scale back and provide some more, give us, give us some, an envelope curve of maybe how upper and lower bounds of what we could be looking at for, for different events. So, so this, this whole modeled area is twenty-one thousand five hundred acres. So first check, you know, you think about the south side of the peaks, it's a big area to burn, but it's really not. If you look at that in comparison to what, what has happened recently with Schultz and museum and tunnel and pipeline. So we broke that into three, three individual scenarios, scenario one, two, and three, kind of moving across the face of the peak, and then scenario four, which is, which is burning all of that. When we, when we dig into this a little bit, and this slide is a little, let's see. There we go. There's a couple of different modeling techniques that play into this. So we have to, we have to look at what the vegetation is in its current state, based on the most, you know, current data that we, that we have, and there's some programs you can use to model burn severity, or you can model fire behavior, and then you use that as a proxy for what the burn severity would be. So what we do is, we've gone into, we've modeled the burn severity, and then we've tweaked that data to more accurately reflect what has happened across Schultz and Pipeline and Museum. So we look at all the different vegetation types across the peaks, you know, the aspen and the mixed conifer, the ponderosa pine, the various grassland meadow areas, and we, we've made it so that the percentages of high and moderate and low and unburned areas are relatively similar to, to what's happened in the past fires. So that we have, have this good groundwork for what, what could potentially happen. On this picture, you can see some of these angular areas here that, that don't look natural, well, those are, those are areas that have been treated, right? And so in the treated areas, in the fire modeling, they show up as more low and moderate severity. Whether that would actually happen, you know, highly wind-driven fire, that's to be debated a little bit, but, but, but it shows how the fuel, there's less fuel in those areas to burn at a less, less severe, less severe. You also see the, this is the wilderness area on the peaks here, and you can see, this is the La Rue Fire Scar from years ago. So that lays the bit of the groundwork for, for what we do next. Another way to look at this is, from a risk perspective, is looking at slopes of the peaks. So if you think about what happened on Schultz and Pipeline, debris flows typically initiate in zones of very steep slopes, so you're getting up onto the flank of the peaks in the wilderness area, basically, those, those are very hazardous, that's kind of the, the beginning of the sediment production that's leading down into the developed areas. That, that then translates into kind of your hyper-concentrated flows and sediment-lated floods that end up in the neighborhoods. So if we look at this picture here, it's just telling because we have, we have kind of multiple, multiple challenges in this area, we have the forest, we have steep slopes, we have a wilderness area, and all that leads into flooding down in the city. So at this point, we have some, we have some preliminary results, I'm not ready to, we're still digesting what they mean and how to, and interpreting them, but what I wanted to show you was just to give some perspective about where we're taking all this modeling. So if you look at this slide, you can see all the, all the watermarks, basically, that are coming down off the peaks, you know, it, all of this translates into the Rio, through downtown, across Lone Tree, on over to the east side of town, and then we've tracked our modeling all the way down to I forty, and that's, that's kind of the end of our comparison at that point. We're also using, the thing with all this modeling is, you have to keep it in perspective. Is this exactly what a fire is going to do? No. A fire, but it is a decent representation of what a fire could be in these areas. And so this lays a lot of the groundwork then that can be used to help make decisions during a fire, or beforehand, really understanding the risk. And so as these results are developed, then the, you'll be seeing more of this stuff as we move on. And I'll turn it back to Jay.
All right, so as we then, the Flood Control District, what we do is, we're going to take this information and really build the case to see where do we spend the dollars, where do we move the equipment to try to make the most impact? So the first thing we're going to do, as Joe's finishing up these comparisons and looking at these flood modeling, so that we eventually will come back to you with more precise, showing you exactly depths and things that are happening and how it flows through downtown Flagstaff and north, north part of campus on NAU, all the way through Continental Country Club. So what we're looking at doing, I don't know if you have remembered the two thousand fourteen FWPP cost avoidance study? That showed for, as we were getting the bond, or the city was getting the bond for the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project, that showed for the Dry Lake Hills area, a potential economic impact to, or cost to the city and Forest Service and everybody that would be involved, of four hundred and eighty-nine million, four hundred and eighty-nine million to nine hundred and eighty-six million. That was just as the Dry Lake Hills area burned, and we've had the small part of that burned with the museum. Now, what we understand and know, as we've dealt with these fires multiple times now, the cost to be reactive to a fire and a post-fire flooding costs up sometimes as much as twenty-five, thirty times more than if you're just proactive and you go out and do the treatment. So we're doing, we have now worked with NAU's Economic Policy Institute to start a study, now that they have the information from Joe, they're going to start looking at what is that economic impact. It's going to be similar to what we did with Bill Williams Mountain, you can see, this is how we came up with these dollar amounts for Bill Williams Mountain, if that burned and we had the subsequent post-fire flooding. So we're going to do the same thing for all of this, and we can look at now, and I assume, this is just Jay thinking here and talking with these economists, we're going to be in the, over a billion dollars, probably over two billion dollars, we don't know yet, we'll get the study and we'll, we'll see what, what it's going to bring. So that then starts to tell us, when, when the county is looking at, and the Flood Control District, as we're setting up our five-year plan to invest thirty million dollars, that thirty million dollars won't be that big of an investment, if we can prevent billions of dollars of economic impact to the town, to the city, to the residents, and to the county's Flood Control District. So what we are now looking at is moving forward, what we know, I mean, just historically, more acres are burning every year across the United States. This isn't a problem that's going to go away anytime soon, forest restoration is the best way to try to prevent these from happening. So we're going to look at investing thirty million dollars, we, our board, or our directors, Flood Control Directors, approved the raise in our flood control tax to get the dollars that we can invest now, and we are going to focus on this Upper Rio watershed. The Coquigny National Forest, we're in discussions with them, they are on board, we've been working already with the new Forest Supervisor, Aaron Mayville, with the District Ranger, they are on board, they are committed to focusing on this same area, so we're meeting with them, getting the projects lined up so that we can begin this work as soon as possible. Obviously, we want to continue to, to work with the city of Flagstaff, so I'm working with Neil Chapman, probably weekly, if not daily at times, you know, as we discuss where are the city's priorities going, where are the county's priorities going, how are we working these together, so that we're not chasing different things and not putting all this together, we want to work this coordinated together. And then we are going to engage multiple partners, we want to continue to engage Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management, National Forest Foundation, who's been instrumental in our work, Bill Williams Mountain, and getting the Forest Service and things kind of running a little bit smoother through National Forest Foundation. We're also talking with the Nature Conservancy, who wanted, wants to do work and has already done work in this area, so they want to continue that, and with the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership. And then along with, we haven't even talked about, the private sector getting involved, places like Arizona Snow Bowl, places like those that are using these areas in their, or this, this area, the, the mountain attracts people to Flagstaff, to our tourism industry. We want to see them get involved, we want to engage them as well in, in the work that we're going to do. So the last thing that's going to be the key to getting all of this always is industry. So we continue to struggle getting industry established, where we can take all of this forest products, this, this wood, the live wood and the dead wood. forest products, this, this wood, the, the live wood and the dead wood, that, that needs to come out of there to, to help protect these, these acres, we need a place to take that. So, we're all working, Neil Chapman, myself, others, we've got people that are retired from forestry, from ERI, Ecological Restoration Institute, coming together and trying to solve this, this issue of, where do we take all this material? So, I want everybody to know that we're, we're opening up every nut, every basket, everything we can to try to solve these problems, to figure out, how do we get rid of the wood that we don't want out there, so that we can preserve the wood that we do want in the forest, that we do want out there, so that we can preserve the tourism industry and all the, the things that it brings to the county, to the city, and to all the businesses here? So, I'm going to open it up for any questions that you guys may have.
And maybe, just let me add a few more comments here. I think, can't express the gravity of what, you know, I've seen the preliminary results, and it's ugly folks. So, the gravity of what, how we manage this issue and what the impact it's going to have on Flagstaff over the long term is significant. Know that, I think, one, we calculated that the carbon loss, you know, with just the Pipeline fire, and I think it pretty much ate everything up that the city had accomplished over 10 to 15 years. So, you know, when you think about sustainability, you know, economically, when you think about sustainability environmentally, a healthy forest equesters a lot more than what's out there today in terms of carbon. So, so this is going to be a crucial issue for the future of this, of this city in particular, and the areas that are impacted within the county are going to be significantly impacted. To move this forward, this is going to take a partnership with the district, with the city, and the Forest Service, and all the parties are going to have to come forward with funding. The 30 million will not treat that area. The 30 million will treat a set of select acres that are, that are those steeper slopes, more expensive areas. That's where we are targeting that funds. We have to be able to make that nexus to the post-wildfire flooding. But to reduce the overall risk of fire in that entire area and reduce the ultimate risk of the post-wildfire flooding and impacted economy, that entire area is going to need to be treated. In addition to that, we are also going to have to work with the federal government to deal with what's happening within the wilderness area. The wilderness area is no longer natural. It has been impacted as well by the fire suppression philosophy that we've had for, you know, over 100 years. Because, you know, there's a lot, and there's a lot of discussion about this now at the federal level. As you know, Neil and I serve on the Federal Wildland Fire Commission, and a lot of discussion, frankly, about bringing back and reinvigorating, you know, a lot of the native practices that were employed to reduce fire threat within areas and across the West. This is many, 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 almost all the tribes employed these strategies, interestingly enough, and have that as part of their history, and a lot of that's been suppressed over the years. So, anyway, a lot of good work at that level, and I think we can capitalize on that, bring in some funding, but we're going to need these commitments, and we're going to need them soon. So, a lot of important conversation till, still to have, so. So, questions for Jay, or I, or?
Or Joe.
Or Joe, or?
And Joe, we won't hold this against you. Do we have comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor and Chair. So, you mentioned that this is going to take a lot of partners to invest in. So, I mean, we just went through an exercise with increasing some var stormwater rates. So, what kind of investment are you hoping for or envisioning that the City of Flagstaff will need to put into this? Because this is a really critical area that we have to address. We can't just ignore it. It's not if, it's when we have a fire event and then flooding. So, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I think we're still trying to figure that out, because we're still trying to figure out how much the Forest Service is going to bring to the table. You know, they're getting, they're getting as much money as they've had in their history right now, and we're, but we're still struggling to get them to give us that dollar amount that they're going to bring to the table. And then, we need to focus on, you know, having Neil determine where the city puts their dollars, and we will have to all work together to come up with that dollar. I'm, I've already estimated that just the steep slopes alone could cost 50 to 60 million dollars total. So, if we're bringing 30, we're going to be going to the Forest Service for another 30 at least, you know, somewhere in that range. As we start to look at all the other acres, I mean, there's 21,000 acres, obviously, we're not going to treat every single acre, but there's 21,500 acres that, that could be treated in this area. So, it could be a pretty high price tag.
And is there consideration for a bond? I know that we did that back in 2010 and brought it to the voters to clear out some of the area that was then hit by the museum fire. So, is that a consideration?
I think everything's on the table. I know that we're talking as a county about some different things. I'll let Lucinda talk.
I, I think, once we really have a better understanding of what is the overall cost issue, and there is, some of these areas are eligible for the forefry funding that came forward from the federal government through IIJ as well as IIRA. And so, that's part, we need to get that commitment. So, I think we need to work together to advocate for that commitment, you know, from the Forest Service, and then I think we can then step back and say, okay, where is it going to need to come through a sales tax initiative similar to FWPP, or is there another mechanism that makes sense? But I, I certainly would not take that off the table. I think, I think this community in particular and across the county understands that these are very significant threats. And the other threat that we're also being very much presented with is within the communities. There's a significant fire threat within the City of Flagstaff, within communities across the county, you know, Kachina Village, Mountaineer, Munn's Park, Parks, Williams, there are all these communities, Tucson. Others have threats both within and outside their communities as well. So, how do we work through this over time focused on the highest-risk areas, of which, now that we've made some really good progress on Bill Williams, this is the highest risk.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Chair.
You know, one of the things I want to point out about, from the county's perspective, is that we really tried to put that money for forest restoration in a lockbox. And, you know, with the emergencies that have happened, the fires, the flood mitigation, it has been absolutely essential that we were able to get the federal funding that we got. And we have continued, and we will to the extent we can, to continue to put that money, that 30 million, in for forest restoration. We don't want that to be eaten up, if you will, by another very important project, and that's flood mitigation. So, we're so very pleased and so very thankful for our congressional delegation, who got us approximately $90 million for the county for flood mitigation, and we appreciate our partnership with the City of Flagstaff in order to get it done and deliver for these devastated communities. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It just goes to show how important it is for forest restoration and being proactive instead of being reactive, because we're dealing with those issues of being reactive with the Pipeline and Tunnel Fire. And I'm especially excited that they finally pushed through that funding that was, that was stalled. We were in DC a couple of weeks ago, and that was one of the big topics that we were talking about. So, it's really great to hear that, that's been pushed forward. So, congratulations. Thank you.
And I'll just add that I'm actually very appreciative of the modeling. I think it's, it's a piece that we've been missing. We've been talking in theoretical terms about what would happen, and it's going to be good to have it down on paper so that we can fully understand what the potential impacts are. And I don't know that I can speak for the council, but I believe from all the conversations that we've had, that we are all in on whatever it's going to take to protect the community from the kind of catastrophic wildfire and then the resulting flooding.
My goal is not to give you a challenge coin for the west side of the peaks. I don't want to do that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are down to item number eight, informational items, two from chair supervisors, county manager, mayor, council, and city manager. So, let's start. I always either start with, with one of you, and I'm going to continue that. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me tonight.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to show my appreciation to everyone being here tonight. It was a great conversation, a lot of good information, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Supervisor Gay.
Yes. Good evening again. But we've all been working since, what, 8 o'clock this morning? We're still at it, but this is what, you know, we wanted, I guess. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to everyone for being here tonight. There is a lot of information, and it's good to have these meetings because all our constituents is part of the city, or also the, in, in surrounding areas, and so, within the counties. So, I just want to say I appreciate the staff. They really work hard, you know, and then, you know, they make us think, but sometimes we, we run out of, I don't know what, what keeps us going, but anyway, sometimes we, we feel that way. But I'm, I'm glad to be part of this, this group, and I want to thank the council and also the board members here and all the staff, both from the city and the council, you know, for providing this information to us and making sure that, you know, we, we're in this together and that all future meetings, you know, it's going to be very beneficial, you know, and for our communities out there. Thank you.
Maybe I'm going to you next. I don't know. Councilmember McCarthy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Good meeting tonight. A lot of good information, and we made some decisions with, with wisdom. I, I just want to quickly mention that since a lot of people sitting here tonight are on the Metro Plan Board, three city council members and two board of supervisors, that Kate Morley just started today as the new executive director of Metro Plan. So, congratulations to her and to Metro Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's go online to our participants. Let's jump over to Supervisor Ryan, and we'll come back to Supervisor Fowler.
It usually takes Lena a minute to get that, the mute off and that kind of thing. She'll be back, I'm sure. So, just quickly, my regrets, I'm not there, I'm just getting back from actually a vacation, and, you know, you might have thought of me in an envious sense. I was not in this, you know, that y'all had experienced, but I've been busy trying to clear my roofs off here. So, I'm trying to catch up on everything, and, and really, I wish I could be there, because it's a first chance to really sit with the, the new council, new mayor, and, and I look forward to working with you. We have a, a long history, Coconino County and City of Flagstaff, like the regional plan, of working together, where you don't see it in, in other jurisdictions. We're not always going to agree, but often we do, and we work together, and I look forward to working with all of you. I congratulate y'all. And, and I think that's enough for tonight, but thank you. Great presentation. Oh, and congratulations to Kate. You, you have an awesome person on Metro Plan, or we do, I guess I should say. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. And we will come back if Supervisor Fowler is able to join us. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff for just incredible hard work to put all this information together. It was a lot of information, a lot of great information, and, and it was a pleasure getting to know the supervisors. I hadn't met any of them, so it was nice being here, and I look forward to having some retreats and other joint meetings, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Harris.
Just my appreciation to the staff for all the work that you all do. I'm just amazed every time I come to one of these meetings. So, thank you, both county and city.
Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. Good job, everyone. Staff, thank you for presenting all the presentations and all the information, and for the new city council, it's great to finally meet with you and meet some of you in person. And so, just want to say thank you, and a reminder, if you live in the Wapaki Trails area, there's a corridor meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at East Valley Baptist Church. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I'm good, Mayor. Just real quickly, it's always great to have, to be able to host our county fellows here. These meetings are important, I value them, and I'm looking forward to our next frequent encounter.
Thank you. Chair.
Yes, and first of all, thank you for the city for always seeming to host us. We really do appreciate this, and of course, we love the city council chambers, it's perfect. And we really appreciate the job that your staff does, your city manager and the rest of the staff, in working in partnership with the county. And, you know, I, you've heard us saying this is unusual. Well, it shouldn't be unusual, and I'm very, very pleased that we have close working partnerships with the city and the county. So, it's very, very essential, especially when we start talking about issues like forest restoration, flood mitigation, housing, the, the, the short-term rental. And, you know, we have so many issues between Greater Flagstaff and Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff. So, we really appreciate your partnership and all the hard work of, of course, your staff. The weather's been the big thing, I think we've all been talking about. Even Supervisor Ryan is still working on his roof. And so, if you don't mind, what this, the county did is, we set up a call center because of the snow loads, and I know you've all been concerned about roof collapsing and, and structures that are, that are collapsing. And so, the emergency management and the county set up a call center, and if you don't mind, we want to, we want to let the public know that we do have a call center here, and just to give you an update on where we are on that, if that's okay, Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair Horstman.
All right, Cory.
Mayor Daggett. Appreciate the opportunity, and talking about partnerships, the city and county work tirelessly together in partnerships, and as a result of the significant snowfall, snow loads have caused a number of our residents' roofs to collapse. That's both in the City of Flagstaff and in surrounding areas. The emergency management team at the county, in conjunction with the Joint Information Center, worked collaboratively between the city and county to provide some educational resources, as well as some materials for them to reference. They have solicited some of the information and posted it online. Those resources include FEMA snow load safety guidance and a list of local providers that are offering snow removal services on roofs and other areas. Over the last weekend, communications were released highlighting the importance of removing significant snow loads, as well as how to identify structural damages to your property. The call center was stood up so that after hours and over the weekends, they would have a number to call. That one number was able to route calls either through the city or through the county to building inspectors to come out and assess properties. Although the call volumes were low, they were all very impactful. These were serious risk. People who actually experienced snow-damaged load to their homes, based off the information that was provided, they were able to look and identify it as a serious issue, address it with their building inspectors, and I have to give a quick shout-out. it with their building inspectors, and I have to give a quick shout-out to both the city and county building inspectors. They were so responsive, they were able to address some of those concerns within hours. And that's all thanks to that collaboration and coordination between the city and county. And that's all I have for the four-letter S-word.
Can I have one more thing? We need to blow our horn here for the City of Flagstaff in Coconino County. DFFM gave Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff a total of twenty-seven million dollars, the largest percentage in the state of Arizona, from DFFM came up here to Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff. You know, it usually doesn't get farther north than Maricopa County, so I think we should all pat ourselves on the back that they even know we exist. So, and, and it's really wonderful, uh, you know, sixteen point one for the City of Flagstaff for the Inter Basin, um, the waterline reconstruction, and ten point nine for our matching funds for the, um, uh, EWPP funding that we're gonna get for flood mitigation. So, again, partnerships work, and they serve our community. So thank you again, City of Flagstaff.
I want to echo appreciation that everyone else has so eloquently expressed. I'm grateful for the great relationship that the city and the county has, and for the partnerships and, and the way we're able to work together. Thank you, staff. And now county manager, do you have anything to add? Nothing? City manager?
No, thank you very much, Mayor. Chair.
All right, and I do not see Supervisor Fowler, so I am moving down to item number nine, public participation.
Mayor, we do not have any at this time.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.